Yes.
Good.
Yep.
Yes.
All right. Good to know. Thank you, Bessie Jo and IT for getting us all set up for this meeting. Let me give a. Well, I guess we need to do a roll call first. So let me, let me open the work session today. We're looking at a two hour work session. Most of them called it by teams environment. Chairman of the Library Board of Trustees, Jackie Rubin is present in the building with me. I am also downstairs in the city council chambers and Bessie Jo Wagner is here with me. We have a few members in the audience we'll introduce later. So let me start with roll call. We do a roll call of city council, please.
Mayor Giles?
Here.
Who? Was that me?
Home. Can you hear me okay? Councilmember Macheskic?
Present.
Gilson?
Here.
Councilmember Powers? Powers and home are absent.
All right, this, this, again, Melanie and Tom join us later, please. Let us know and we'll note that in a minute. Jackie, I'll turn it over to you to do a roll call for the.
So I'm calling the library board work session order.
Can you hear me, Don?
Yes, I can. Okay. I've called the meeting, library session. Library board meeting to order at nine oh three and I'll do a roll call. Meg?
I think she was.
I thought I saw her name before, but no. All right. Lola Elliott?
Here.
David Gallipoli? Patrick Coyle?
Here.
And Jackie Rubin. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. This is Bob. I'm going to do a quick welcome and set the tone for the meeting, talk about our goal. And I'll try to keep my comments brief. First of all, I'm excited personally and as a member of city council and as the mayor to get together with all of you. I think today's meeting, a lot of preparation went into it, a lot of good. My expectation is it will be a very productive meeting. We'll take a lot of. Want to welcome everyone, especially the newest members of the library board. Based on the screen and Patrick, like to welcome.
This isn't done very good.
Purpose of our work session is to bring the council and trustees speed on the library expansion project. So we have a lot of new information to share. Most of it has been sent to all of you. So after we're up to speed on Ron and all the good things happening and we've got ideas. Then our next. Is for us to come to a consensus on the direction for this project.
Mayor Bob, this is Erin Greaves. Unfortunately, we're having a lot of feedback issues and we're not hearing what you're saying clearly. Can I just remind everybody on the call to please mute their phones or their computers so that we can hear the speaker clearly? And then unmute yourself when you need to speak. And if you need help in doing that, let us know now.
Thank you, Erin. That's a good reminder. Our technology.
Didn't want your words to get lost there, Bob.
Oh, thank you for that reminder. All right, let me, let me start over. Just wanted to welcome everyone. Purpose of today's work session is to bring council and trustees up to speed on the library expansion project. And hopefully we will come to consensus on the direction for the project by the end of the meeting. Going to start with history of the expansion project. And Annette, first the communicator will lead us through that. I believe everyone has access to that timeline. And it's a really condensed two page summary of the history of our extension project. So Annette, please lead us through that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Bob. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good. So we thought it would be helpful since so many of us are new to the leadership positions for the city of McCall in terms of the council, the board of trustees, even myself. Having joined the organizations after this project had been underway for quite some time, at least in the decision making. And so I thought it would be helpful if we had a quick reminder on where we've been and how we got to today. The different decision points, just to get us started before we get into some of the new information that we've learned since the council and the board last talked about the project. So we went back through historic minutes. They're in the packet if anyone wants to take a deeper dive and. Details, but I pulled out a few highlights over time that Erin put into this nice chart for us. And one of the things I think just right off the bat is that the library board of trustees has been working on an expansion for a long time in terms of the need, the concept, how to get there. And there's been, you know, substantial volunteer time and effort to get us to today. So I just want to recognize that. And the folks that are new to the library board, you know, you're inheriting a lot of great foundational work that's already been done on behalf of the library. And, you know, we look forward to working together to continue to move it forward. So with that, one of the things I found interesting is that back in 2001, the council at that time talked with the library board about the need for an expansion and a long range plan for city facilities. And this was at the time that the annex building, as we call it today, was back then referred to as the old fire station and that at the time, the council was trying to decide whether to purchase that station and what to do with it. And so back in 2001, decision to purchase the fire station was made. And the intent at that time was related to the library expansion, which again was confirmed by the council and the library board a couple of years later when they adopted a strategic plan. And that plan had many items in it, two of which are relevant today, which is the expansion project itself onto that former fire station site. And then the other goal being should a, to pursue a library taxing district separate from the city. And so that was supported and the staff went forward to try to establish a library district. Unfortunately, the voters didn't pass that. And so the library board and the. Back together to talk about, okay, what are we going to do? In the meantime, the city administration back in 2005 was trying to decide what to do with the police station, the police services and other functions here on the city campus. And decided that to remodel that annex building to house some staff in there temporarily. And the library director at the time did remind the council that that had been identified as the site for the future library expansion. Fast forward, we have another strategic plan adopted by the council for the library. And it still includes the same goals of a library expansion using that location and establishing a library district. The city continued to work together with the library on these city campus needs for several years. And the library board of trustees did continue to report back to council on their needs for that building, which continue today being the lack of storage. There's no good meeting rooms, issues with ADA compliance and all of those items that we're already aware of now. The council has again, over the last, well, let's see, we're in 2020. So basically over the last five years, there's been quite a bit of work put into figuring out a site for parks maintenance, which is housed in the bottom portion of the annex at that time. We have since that time relocated the police department and moved all of the administrative staff out of the annex into city hall. And so now the annex building is solely occupied by parks. But primarily their equipment and materials needed to maintain our facilities and our parks. So the council still has affirmed that site is being needed for the library expansion. So we've been working over the years to identify another site for the parks function. There's been a number of conversations with the council evaluating locations and options such as, you know, leasing space and that type of thing. The most recent decision by the council identified the museum site as the preferred location. And that's an old conversation that had occurred in the past as well, under the former parks director with the museum board at the time. And our current lease with the museum does allow us to use a portion of that property for city functions if we need to. So that at this moment is the current direction on where to cite the parks function. In 2015, going back to the library issue, there was a point in the minutes where the library board reported to the council that they were not going to pursue formation of the library district and instead work on fundraising, separate fundraising for a library expansion. That's also the point in time when the local option tax funds were established and the library started to apply for those monies to be earmarked for a library expansion project. Back in 2015 as well, that city council did have a work session on concepts for the library and whether it could go up to two stories on the current building. And they also evaluated whether to take that annex building and create it into, just remodel it and keep parks and recreation in that building. So they received those concepts, but didn't, as far as I could tell, didn't direct movement on those. The next year, we, the city did hire Humphreys Poly Architects, which are the same people that we are still working with related to the expansion project. So back then they came in and did the evaluation. They reported to the council, yes, it's not ADA compliant. And talked about what kind of space needs are required for just the physical requirements of the library to comply with ADA, to house the collection, to, you know, make sure that it was functioning correctly. At that time, two options were presented to the council. Option A, which utilizes the annex location and assumed parks would be relocated. And option B, which was smaller and did not expand onto the annex site. At that time, the library expansion committee and their report to the council recommended option A. And the council agreed with that and directed us to go forward, figure out how to finance that. In 2017, the council approved the fundraising contracts for the library project. We know today that the fundraising effort is now housed within the library foundation, which was established after 2017. But at that time, the person worked on a contract out of the library department. Back in 2017, when the council approved the plan for proceeding with the library expansion project, the council and the library board talked about a fundraising goal of $3 million and the idea of creating a library foundation to support that effort. And they also talked about or had a reminder from the interim city manager of the, at that time, about parks needing to be relocated if they were going to use the annex site. So in 2018, that's when the library board and staff and council investigated all of the potential financing options. The council has been setting aside general funds in the capital improvement plan towards the project. Lots of locations are approved for the project. The council again looks at location sites for the parks department and again prefers the museum site. That's when we received direction from council to create a civic campus master plan to address some of the unanswered questions about this particular site and how it would interact with a new library. So all of that was completed. And then we get into the real thick of the details of the expansion itself, having all of those decisions being made now about which option the council preferred, the locations, et cetera. So that project budget is finalized and that budget is in your packet, what ended up being the final project. And so after that, the council in the beginning of 2020, as we all know, referred it to the ballot. We had the election in May. We just barely did not meet the super majority requirement. And then the council decided, okay, let's step back and talk to our public and figure out what it is we need to do if we're going to back back before them again in the future. And so that's where we're at. We've conducted surveys. Erin's going to go into detail about the focus groups in a moment. And I believe the library board of trustees, as well as the expansion committee have also had conversations since the election. And we're at the point today where we're hoping that after digesting all the information and getting the latest updates that the library board of trustees and the council can have a good dialogue with each other this morning and give us direction on where they want staff to go next for this project. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to kind of highlight where we've been. And I'm happy to answer any questions or we can move on to Ms. Rubin's presentation.
Thank you, Annette. Really appreciate that. Jackie? If you will leave the discussion, perhaps there's a question about Bob Menzel. Provided. Want to compliment on that? Really helpful.
Thank you.
You're putting that together ahead of time.
Thank you, Bob.
You're still getting a little feedback. Everybody else is getting that, the feedback.
Yeah, we heard that. I think that's better. So I want to thank city council for having this joint meeting with the library board. And I want to thank, I think, Annette and Bessie Jo and Erin and whoever else put all that work into the timeline. I think that was a great idea and the format's terrific. There's been 20 years behind us, so it's kind of hard to remember all the details. I do want to point out that we've been on different paths, trying to do a library district, which lost by one point. We promised the, promised the annex and then things changed and that didn't happen for Auntie Paula. And even partnering with the police department and then they solved their problem and they have another space. But the library still hasn't, doesn't have another extended library yet. It was still working on it. And it was Meg's brilliant idea that started this off in 2015 on this, where now. Of all the efforts in the past 20 years, she can't hear me. Who can't hear you, Don? She can't hear. Should I? Let's see, is that better, Don? Okay, thank you. Of all the efforts in the past 20 years to get a new building, we are at the best point that we've ever been moving, losing the vote by 29, no votes. So I have a summary of what the library and the many committees under us have been working on. And I'm not going to read it, but I'd like to just point out some of the highlights and kind of summarize. So since the election, the building committee has met, the foundation has met, the friends of the library has met and the ambassadors have met. And they're all on board to move ahead with the project. They've been spending their time and their thoughts brainstorming about which direction we could be taking to go from here. They've been suggesting that we need to update the cost estimates for a new building since they're now a year old. They've been looking at ways to perhaps reduce the cost of the bond. They've been looking at revising the case for support so that Amy Rush and the ambassadors can go as quickly as possible. Since the bond, the library board has met four times, once a month. And the first thing we did was we analyzed the election results. So in May of 2020, no other school levy or bond passed in Idaho. The McCall Public Library received the highest percentage of yes votes compared to all the other school and hospital bonds on the ballot statewide. We had 1,107 yes votes. 29, as everybody remembers, 29 votes short of our super majority. And in all the board members and committee members in formal conversations with voters, for us, two elements came up. One was the worries about the pandemic and the cost of the parks building. So after the board discussing ways to move forward, the boards kind of come up with, with four suggestions. And this is in the report, but just to bring it out for everybody because there was a lot to read. We do want to stay the course with the expansion because we feel the building is the appropriate size. We don't want to go any smaller. We don't want to go back to zero and start over. We feel that we need to change the bond to go back to the voters. And we need to change the cost. And that may just be need to send us over the edge this time. We may want to consider renaming the bond, perhaps, to address the issue of the parks building include, being included in the bond, but really not included in the title. So people felt they were surprised at what was in the bond. Also, the board members do feel that the best time for the new bond would be to put it on the ballot in May for many reasons. So we want to stay the course. We would like to reduce the cost. We'd like to address the issue of the parks building. And we'd like to put the ballot in, on the, for the election in May. So that's my portion, my contribution at this point. I would like to say that after we hear Aaron's report, which is up next, that I'd like to be able to comment on Aaron, Aaron's report. Okay?
Absolutely. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
I noticed in reading the rest of the memo and some of the other materials that there's still. The, this whole question of when should the bond be is a big one. And we'll have time in our second hour of the two hours this morning. We'll have time for lots of, you know, everyone to weigh in from the board, everyone to weigh in from council and some thoughtful conversation on that. Because that's a, that's a pivotal question.
I agree.
And it's lots of opinions out there. And then with COVID-19. Yeah. But thanks for putting that together. That's a really, really helpful memo. Appreciate it. All right, Erin, can you, can you still hear me?
Yes, sir, I can. Can you hear me okay, Mayor Bob?
Yeah, you're coming through. Great. So we're now on to our fourth item under the, under our agenda, public feedback and insights since election. And that's also what I like to call focus groups. And as I remember, the city council gave you a pretty big assignment in a very short timeframe. And we appreciate you taking that seriously and doing a great job. So the time is yours.
Thank you. Well, good morning, everybody. My name is Erin Greaves and I'm the communications manager for the city of McCall. I was, like Mayor Bob said, tasked with reaching out into the community and doing some more personal interviews and small group meetings to sort of uncover kind of opinions outside of the norm. I know typically we're all used to dealing with the same people in the same rooms and we have the same meeting attendees when we talk about things like libraries. So sometimes it's really fun, take it out. Talk to people that wouldn't normally get in that circle. So a couple of things I want to start with was in addition to doing what the council asked, which was to go out and find out what our public and their constituents voting think about this project. We wanted to, of course, explore those core items that we uncovered in that online survey, which was the cost, the need for a library and the need a library presents in the community. And then also the wrapped in facility project pieces of the bond. I had some other goals as well, which was to uncover any misconceptions, rumors or questions that were still in the public about the project or the library, to discover improved ways to communicate. Projects. And in fact, it showed us ways we should be communicating on all city projects. Also to outline opportunities for improvements in all facets of the project as we move forward down whatever course comes up after today. So just for fun, a couple of things that are not in the report that I found out was that people want more focus groups in general. So I thought that was important to let city council know. They really enjoyed doing that. I got a lot of great positive feedback. People even emailed me afterwards, which normally never happens. So that was super fun. Also, Tom Grody will be excited to know that the majority of the people said they get their news from the Star News and everything the city is doing from the Star News. So I probably should stop working so hard on our website and pay Tom Grody more money for advertising. Third, that your citizens wish we had some sort of town crier. They just want more information right in their faces. And so these are great lessons I've learned, some real aha moments on ways we can be better communicators with our public. So it's important before I start that it, to note that these meetings were meant to uncover. So I was not. So I was not necessarily correcting misconceptions that, that came up during the meetings. And it was the goal to keep them talking and to find out as much as we could. So there might be some things reflected in the, the report that you and I both know happened at the library or are provided at the library. But these, this group that I spoke to did not know about those things. So I think that's an important piece. The report, you know, me as city staff, but a direct response from constituents. So, um, pulling myself into the actual project here, um, I started out with giving everybody a quick fact sheet, much like this page here. Page one of my report, page seven of your packet. And I gave them an overview of the project, the cost to taxpayers, you know, what happened at the election, like, um, Jackie just reviewed. And then, um, a quick kind of, um, ideal of what the goal was, which was to find out what they thought about the cost, the need, and the facilities of the library bond. So I did eight total meetings over the course of two and a half weeks. Um, and I did quite a few phone interviews for people who were not able to participate in the small group meetings. Most of the meetings were run in person. A couple of were run virtually. They were all done in socially distanced capacity and masks, um, when appropriate. Um, and all the materials and presentations were consistent in every meeting, including the questions that were asked. They were asked in the same order and the same questions were asked of every single person I interviewed in every group that I ran. And so they were really meant to, you know, sort of inspire dialogue and get people talking to each other and bouncing off each other like you'd expect. In your packet, you'll see some quick links to some of the displays and renderings. Just to recap, I showed them, of course, all the renderings that we had shown our public through our website, um, as created by Humphreys Polley, um, both exterior and interior. I also walked them, or had them walk through with Meg LoJack in her video, the virtual walkthrough, um, which took about four and a half minutes. And, and some people, in fact, most people had not seen it. So, um, that was wonderful information, but also, um, interesting how they received it. We went over the plans. We went over site plans and I also included a cost breakdown. And I had questions tied to each of these processes. So I started out by just asking sort of how they use the library. And the majority of people, as all of you, that the library plays a really important role in our community and in all communities. And nobody had a bad thing to say about the library. Everybody thinks the library is wonderful and necessary and that our staff does wonderful things. And so we had a really positive response in general to libraries and specifically to the McCall Public Library. People noted things like the Idaho Room and how unique it was and, um, how they, you know, love our children's programming. And, um, they always seem to be doing something. So a lot of great comments came out of that beginning. And that really got the, the fire started in the conversation. But when we started to sort of hone in on the project itself and go over those quick facts, we started to see a little bit more of a mix in the room. We had general comments that the focus groups, although they saw, you know, the library as necessary, this current proposed design, some people thought, we want more space, we want improvements, we realize the building is falling apart, but we just don't think it should have to cost that much. We want to see it at a more affordable price. So, um, there are some comments listed in here and I'll go through some of them. I don't want to, um, read to you. So I'm trying to summarize best I can, um, to be very detailed. So the idea of a library for a gathering space was something that was really popular. They were skeptical on whether or not the spaces would be available to citizens because they had been promised, some mentioned that they had been promised public spaces in the past, either from us or the, or other entities. And those ended up being swallowed and used pretty quickly. And then they never really got access as a citizen base. So they kind of feel like it's an empty promise coming again. I can also say that there were some comments, quite a few wishing it was more like a community center. I mean, this is where we go and gather and we join together and we want to play bridge and do yoga and, and all those things. So, um, there was a lot of conversation around the place that a library fills in a community gathering space and resource. But as much as the space would get used and that if you build it, they will come concept, I think they really still thought that the price was too steep. And I think that goes back to what Jackie had said before, you know, obviously cost being, we always knew was sort of the number one thing. Cost is maintained as a priority throughout the entire process of all the focus groups. And the importance of an expanded collection, um, so that, that's when it got a little split too. Because I think people really want it, want to see an expanded collection. But some doubted whether or not we need to increase the space in order to achieve that goal. So we had some people say, well, that doesn't always mean books in one space. Do we need to up our game in the, um, inner mountain library loan program? Do we need to see connections with the Donnelly Library, with the Cascade Library? So they want to see more partnerships. And so that sort of brings that comment of do we need more space to increase the collection? We have many cited that the pandemic unveiled a technology piece, which also goes back to that collection. That now we're seeing that we're accomplishing more with technology than we are in spaces now. And so there's a real doubt in the community with the pandemic is, do we need more space? It seems like we're doing things more remotely than ever before. And so I would say technology came up in almost every single meeting multiple times. They want to see the library as a technological hub, as well as a gathering space, as well as a library. They want to know, you know, do they have internet access? Is there access tech, technology? You know, we want to be able to check out iPads and computers and things like we've done in years past with VCRs and phonographs and, and that type of thing. I will quote this one gentleman who said, "I am concerned about a building with a lot of bricks and mortar in a time of rapid technological change. And I would expect that the pace of technological change is going to accelerate, decelerate." So I think that that kind of puts into perspective most of what I heard in the group, that we want to make sure we're addressing the need for technology in a new library. I'll transition now into the next portion, which was the cost and fundraising piece. I actually asked the question, what is the right number? Meaning what's the overall right number for a library and, you know, what willing, or what are you willing to pay? The what are you willing to pay question typically got as little as possible as an answer. And the question of what should a library cost? Again, that was a little bit split because people either said two or $3 million because I think they seemed to be kind of latched on to those numbers we were talking about originally several years ago. Whereas other people said, well, I'm not a builder, but I know that that sounds too much. So, um, this, the concept kept coming up that we're not Jackson Hole, we're not Ketchum, we're not Sun Valley. So they want to make sure that this library is unique to McCall, like that Idaho Room spaces and all the things that make McCall special. I think they want to see our library as a unique space, um, moving forward. I also think that, um, one gentleman made a comment and I think it's something we should explore. I didn't have time to fact check this one. The, I did some research and the cost of this library was beyond the cost per square foot of any other library I could find. Now, we know we're in an expensive, um, building time right now and we know building in the mountains is a little different than everyone else. But I think that that's something we should note and probably find out more about. So the $6.2 million number was definitely a little too large for the majority of the people that I spoke with. They were split though, when I asked, well, would you rather see a smaller library to reduce the cost? And most people said, well, I like the way that it looks. I just want some other, someone else to pay for it. I don't want it to go to the taxpayers. So I think, um, you know, some people mentioned, well, yeah, you could trim off the larger meeting spaces. Maybe there's ways we could reduce costs, but, you know, overall, I think there's, the concept was, we know we can improve this building. We know it's not suitable. We know it needs to be better, but does it have to be $6.2 million worth of better? So, I mean, that, that's the consensus. There was some concern about the cost change. So how, you know, like I said, how it started at $3 million and sort of snowballed, which sort of, um, explained to me that maybe we didn't do a great job of explaining our process as we moved through it and explaining the different building pieces and as, and what happened. And then we got into fundraising. And so my goal with fundraising was first off, I asked, did you know if there was fundraising going on about this project? Um, and so many people said, well, I knew there was a letter writing campaign or someone else said, well, yes, I, you know, I attended, I attended a few meetings or dinner parties about it. But it was clear from the newspaper that there was, of course, a large donor program done. And we all know that that was a really difficult project that people worked really hard on. But I don't think that the public was really aware that it was necessarily happening. When I asked about that sort of smaller donor support and if that's important, you know, most people agree that small support is important because it shows kind of community buy-in and that everyone in the community wants this piece, not just the people who have larger sums of money to give. It says here, one, one remarks that, um, he was told that the small scale fundraising was coming when he asked if he could donate to the project. But then it never happened. And so I think we all know, we, we called that the quiet phase, right? And I think there were some people from, um, on a board that had mentioned that we thought we were going to be able to come out of the quiet phase, but we never really seemed to get there. So there was a lot of quiet phasing and we wondered if we were ever going to get out of it. So that was one of the quotes I found. This one gal said, whether it's $2 million or $4 million, I would encourage the city to get more private money, more grants versus the tax money. So part of it, um, part of what we talked about as well was the parks relocation facility, which I know was part of, um, your presentation, uh, on the board, um, for the library. And I think that it's important to mention that your citizens and, and city council's constituent base agree that the park facility muddied the waters. There was certainly not a debate on whether or not parks needed a facility. They, they believed in the value of what parks provides just as equally as what the library provides. But I think that there was some concern on, well, why are we, why are we raising money for a library? Why are we telling people it's a library bond when there's a plaza and there's, you know, parking and there's a park facility and all these other pieces as a part of this library bond? So some people felt that it wasn't a straightforward concept and because of that, they voted no because it, it was a little bit muddy. When asked if they would prefer the relocation come off the bond, knowing their taxpayer dollars would still be paying for it one way or another, they all said, well, not all, many said yes. They would rather it come off, just so it was clear. That said, if it did stay on, your constituents agreed with what Jackie said, perhaps we need to be more transparent in the name. You know, in communications, we know people typically don't read below the byline. And I think it's important to remember that if it's called a library bond, that's what they're going to take as face value. Perhaps we talked about things like, um, uh, the library, um, the library expansion and parks relocation bond. We talked about the McCall Public Library and Resource Cultural Center. I mean, we kind of brainstormed all kinds of fun ideas. But the idea that we need to be more transparent from the top down was really evident in, in all my conversations with the public. So then I took some time, like I said, to take them through the walkthrough of the library, um, that Meg had done. And we looked at the renderings really carefully and kind of outlined what each of them was. And, you know, we showed them, you know, the new, the lower stacks for ADA compliance. And we talked about the, um, the actual, you know, the, um, sustainability concept and the layout of the upstairs and the downstairs. And the comments regarding the design, that it, they looked a little bit more. Oh, I have, I have earphones on. Can you wait, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, you're coming through great, Erin.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I think Annette wasn't hearing me. Now, yeah, comments, mountain towns. Okay. They said that the design looked a little bit like more of, like other mountain towns, which I think I mentioned in the beginning. And that they doubted that it was a concept of the library. Now, of course, we all know that there were a lot of focus groups done at the beginning of this project to sort of lay out what this would look like. But obviously that didn't include everyone. And so some of these responders said, well, we want to make sure that we're building a building that looks like McCall and not like other areas. In addition, talking specifically about cost, people mentioned things like, you know, I can see where it appears to the middle or lower class income people that we'd be paying for this is wow, isn't there something in between? This is a lot of library, you know, for, for us. So moving through, um, we talked a little bit about the library district, the history of the library district. In particular, asking, you know, as a user, how do you feel about the concept that a taxpayer is paying for a building that's used by people outside your taxing area? And, you know, for a small fee, they get their library cards. You know, how do you feel about that? Um, and, and many people said, well, they did wish there was a little bit more equality. But in the end, they all agreed that libraries were for all and they wanted it to continue to provide for the people who needed it. Um, and so, and that was the concept. We even explored the idea of, well, should we raise the price of a library card to match what you're paying as a, a taxpayer? And they said, no, you know, we think the libraries are important. We want you to find the money somewhere else. So, um, just to note that, um, they do value all of the users of the library and being a hub of the library in McCall. I even asked that question, should the library be in McCall? Should it, you know, be a taxing district? And they like the idea of it being a McCall library. Um, and when I say they, that would mean the majority of the people I spoke to. We talked a lot about the pandemic because it's the topic of the moment and it's hard not to when you're all wearing masks or you're talking virtually. And when I asked them, you know, you think COVID affected it? And of course they all said, you know, well, probably in some way. And can we scale back? Can we change some things? You know, can we do another push for private funding? We're having a lot of issues right now, um, with the pandemic and, and we really need to see, we need, really need some help and some, and some time. We have people saying that in, you know, May 2021, is that the right time coming up? And I think what we're hearing is, you know, who knows? We don't have a crystal ball. I mean, people, people said that to me. But I think in the end, they think that we might need more time and that's for you to decide. That May might be too soon for you to be able to find all this additional funding they want you to find. And maybe you need more time to find what design changes you might want to make, if any, to, um, reduce the cost. So they thought you might need more time to make these things happen. Not to mention a huge amount of financial strain on our communities, our families, on our smaller taxpayers because of the pandemic. I had people mention that they'd been out of work, that, um, we're going to have some people struggling with mortgages as we come out of this pandemic. And so is this the right time to be asking people for money? And, uh, you know, it was, it, people are very concerned about it and just like all of us, you know, we don't know what's to come. But I think it's unanswerable. And this person said, I think it's unanswerable and we're plowing new ground. There was a comment that, um, people thought it would almost be rude to bring it back quickly. I had, I had a few people say that, that they actually thought it would be kind of saying, well, we didn't like your answers, so we're going to bring it back again. Or, you know, we didn't believe you, so we're going to try again. Um, and so there's a quote here that says, this gentleman said, um, they were going to bring it back immediately and that was a big mistake. And I found that offensive. He said, there was a vote, it didn't win immediately. And because you don't like the outcome, you're just going to run it right back through. And because you don't like the outcome, you're just going to run it right back through. So keeping in mind that in a difficult time like this, some people might see that as an inappropriate use of our time as government, that we should be protecting them in some different way. Um, a few focus group attendees said that they liked the ballot the way it was and we should just do a better job explaining it. So that goes back to timing again. Do we need more time to explain it better, to answer questions? Um, do we need more time to, you know, answer the questions that come in at the bottom of this report? So I asked, you know, when is the right time? And people said, give it a year, give it a year and a half, give yourself some time for grant writers to find more money. Um, if there was maybe getting a little bit creative, someone even mentioned the gap between the library and city hall. Maybe you should just build there and leave the parks building alone. So people were getting really creative and trying to be helpful um in how we can sort of try to save some money. Um, and this one gentleman said, you know, I'm not here to say, no, no, no. I'm just here to say, let's do it slightly different in a different way or a different time. I'm super pro library. So then um we moved into sort of communication and marketing. And, you know, obviously this being, you know, a big piece of what I do, um, I asked them some pretty, you know, fo- forward questions. You know, what do you think about these renderings? What do they say to you when you look at them? Um, and, you know, people felt it was a little bit grandiose, um, the renderings themselves. Um, and, you know, we might know that that the downtown doesn't look exactly like the shiny rendering that we showed everybody in the beginning, right? It always looks a little shinier in the pictures. But I think that's something that we need to think about when we move through um projects in the future. My first reaction is it's very high end, very expensive. And knowing our voters in our community is split between people in million dollar homes and people in trailer homes, isn't there something in between? And so I think that that kind of summarized what I heard about the, you know, sort of haves and have nots in our community and are we providing something that everyone can appreciate and would want to pay for and see value in? Um, we talked about the name portion, about being more transparent. Um, there were some issues in messaging. Um, in particular, there were a lot of misconceptions that the city was not working or contributing enough towards the project when they were attaching those initial initial pieces to the bond. Um, further comments that the Parks Department wasn't doing enough on their own to financially support it. Of course, not realizing that the responsibility of the of the Parks Department falls on the city um and not necessarily, you know, the Parks Advisory Board. So there was some confusion there. There were also some misunderstandings, um, depending upon what presentation or organization they were dealing with, you know, whether it be, you know, the Friends of the Library, the Foundation, the the um Building Committee, the City Hall, the ambassadors. I mean, there were a lot of people involved in this process and doing their own parts of it. Um, so there was some confusion about what was what? How much things were costing, um, what the total dollar amounts were, that we weren't seeing consistency in the messaging across the board. And that really uncovered itself as a real issue as we move forward, that we need to see some tightening up of our consistent messaging. Um, we also saw um a little bit of a disconnect in um the actual particular persons that I voted by mail because of the pandemic and I had to meet the deadline. But then after I saw everything was included, I would have voted no. So I think what's important to cut takeaway from that particular quote, and there were many people that felt that way, is that we need to not necessarily count on the fact that everyone who voted yes before will vote yes again. Maybe the pandemic will change their vote. Maybe the fact that more has been uncovered about the project. And so I think that we would be doing ourselves a disservice to say, we know we have, we only need twenty nine more. Okay, we will want to make sure that we retell the story in a positive way, that we try to answer these questions that they have and give the constituents a new chance based on whenever we come back to the election. So we had some questions received during the focus groups and those are listed in the packet. And I'm just going to run through them briefly. Some of them got answered um by Linda. But I think it's interesting to see how your public um is still thinking about this project. In particular, what are the operational projections? So people are wondering, we're going to a larger facility. Certainly, there's going to be an increase in tech support and tech and staff and maintenance and a larger collection. So what are the additional costs outside the bond that we need to be thinking about? Um, what would happen if you postponed it? What would happen to to those dollars that were granted or that were donated? Um, what would happen to the money that was set aside out of out of your, the tax dollars? Um, how would um any, like we said, those grants? I knew that know that some of them have already said that they'll extend, but all to these big donors. What would happen to those contributions? Um, they asked for a breakdown, which is included in your packet as well. Um, and then they wanted to know what our current library budget was, how much money we currently bring in in um library card revenue. Um, how many bonds does the city have currently? Because they were worried we were snowballing a bunch of bonds. Um, can we track the original proposal of the project presentation? So I think it'd be good to, like the timeline we just got, give our public as well, so that they can see sort of where we've come from. Um, what is the actual cost of the parks building now? I know some things have changed, like you said, getting a a new, Jackie said, a new building estimate and since time has passed, so that question came up. Um, operations and maintenance for the parks facility, you know, what does that look like? There was, it was a, it's some really great conversation and a lot of people were really excited to be a part of it, to feel like they had a piece of of this big project you've all been working so hard on. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I know it's a lot of information in one place. Um, so I'll open it up, Mayor Bob, if you want to ask for questions.
Thank you, Erin. That was a great, great summary and overview. And thank you for getting that to all of us ahead of time. Um, it was, in my case, I was able to hide out in my office at home and read through it and take some notes down. I'm sure everyone came in prepared today. So um, I'm going to do a formal sweep of every member of city council and ask for questions and comments. And then I'm going to ask Jackie Rubin to do the same with every um Library Board of Trustees member. And thanks again. That's a lot of information in a short amount of time, Erin. Um, really good job. I think focus groups, I think, I think we really did a great job, everyone that helped you. And we, I think we've learned a lot. And um, I guess as the mayor, I feel a real responsibility that we are thoughtful about this information, that we digest it today together and the game plan that responds so that we can tell a story this winter to all of our constituents, everyone in the city and outside the city, that we listened to their input and here's our answer. And that's a pretty daunting task, but I think we're up to it. We got some very creative people that are on this call today. So let me ask Bessie Jo if she's detected whether our other, I think we have two members that we did not log in with us originally, Tom and Melanie. Are they online with us? Well, let me, let, um, Bessie Jo, if you could help me, let me start the sweep with uh Tom. Tom Sowers, are you on on the call with us? Are you on the team's environment? Can you hear me? All right, let me try Melanie. Melanie, are you able to hear me? All right, then I'll move on to um Mike. I know you are on and I was able to hear you earlier. Mike, do you have questions and or comments that you'd like to share with us today?
Um, thanks, Bob. I I don't necessarily have questions. I do want to reiterate that um that I am, you know, absolutely on board with uh finding the best way to move forward, that everybody is um in agreement with. And and I also, um, I think, as I've mentioned before, that I think that trying to taper it down and having the cost that we're asking for in the bond being the lowest possible is important, and that seems to be what we've heard. Um, and bringing all the private donations into the mix. So, yeah, I am uh, I am completely supportive of all of the people that have been putting so much time and effort into this great project. And what direction that we choose to go, um, like I said, just a function of bringing it forward from all of the various parties that are done a lot of due diligence and that. So really appreciate where everybody's at, what everybody has done and um want to keep moving forward. If there's specific questions from me and beyond that, you know, certainly I have more thoughts, but I don't think I need to take more time other than to make sure that everybody knows that I'm absolutely in support and um the direction that we're looking at going is is great. Did you have any other kind of questions, Bob, that you were wanting to kind of glean from uh myself or Colby while we're?
Um, so we're, I'm going to get to that in just a minute. I just wanted to focus on uh interacting with Erin during when we get to our second hour, kind of a three minute overview. Um, I'm I'm sure we'll have lots more dialogue then. That that was our intent when Annette and I set this up is to make sure that there's a lot of dialogue in the second hour with every board member of the Board of Trustees and with the entire city council. So I think, I think that's when we'll get into the a little bit of more of the specifics, Mike. That sound okay to you?
Yeah, it sounds great. Thanks.
Colby, uh, I know you're on. What's your thoughts after Erin's uh focus group presentation?
Yeah, I I think we have a a lot to cover. There's, there's definitely a lot of factors that are coming into play. And I think Erin did a great job of uh of highlighting all the many different factors that that we have to take into account on on moving this project forward. And I do really appreciate, I feel like we got some quality feedback uh from Erin's efforts and and the outreach in the community. So I'd like to commend you on that one for sure. But yeah, as far as specifics, I guess I'm hold off until we kind of get into the discussion here. Um, but yeah, I also share the same sentiment as Mike. I'd, I'd, I'd like to see how we can get this project going in a way that that our community feels it'll provide the most value for us. And um, we've got a dedicated group of people um wanting the same thing. So let's keep talking.
Thank you, Colby. So Mike and Colby, thanks for your encouragement and thoughtfulness on that. I don't have anything more to add right now. So I'm going to ask Jackie Rubin if we could poll each member of the Library Board of Trustees.
Sure. Thank you. Sure. So I'll ask my board members if they have any comments to make sure everyone has a time to voice their questions for Erin or just comments for Erin. Um, Lola? Can you, we can't hear you. And you have to unmute Lola.
Lola, you can unmute at the top of your screen.
There we go. Go ahead, Lola.
Oh, she unmuted and then she muted herself right back.
Wave at her, Bob.
Now, am I okay?
Now, we we missed everything, though.
I can hear you right now.
Perfect. Okay, you know how technologically inexperienced I am, let's face it. Okay, I had, um, number one, I wanted to say, Erin, you did a fantastic job and I learned so much and I so appreciate that. I know you went above and beyond what was required of you as a job and I can't thank you enough. Um, the first thing I was, I was surprised that people were unaware of our timeline. And and I think that's really important that you said that we need to give the history of the project a little bit more feedback. I'm just going to go through these quickly, the things that jumped out at me. The other thing was the quiet time and and that conversion from the quiet time to the active. And I felt that um you saw that as something that was very important that we need to look at. And I hadn't thought about that as much until you brought that up. Also, um, the community thinking that it was in inappropriate to um put that, um, put the library issue back onto the bond in like May, saying that it was, it was offensive because it was like, you know, a person at school, well, if you don't pass this test, we'll give it right back to you. And and I thought that was really an important statement that you made to think about that because I hadn't thought about that. So there were many things in here. I made lots of notes of things that I wanted to question, but I, but I I thought what you did most of all was made me think about all these issues because I thought I had my mind pretty well set. And I'm so glad you brought up all these issues. And um, so now I do need more time to think about things that I thought I was set on. So thank you, Erin, for bringing this up. And uh, thank you, Bob and Annette and everyone for coming together with this time because I know our time is valuable. And so I thank each and every one of you for this. Okay, now I'll try to unmute myself.
No mute. Okay, so we have a brand new board member with us today and he has, this is really his first meeting. But Patrick, if there's anything that you'd like to ask Erin or we'll understand if you feel like you're new to this project, but I do want to give you a chance to speak up. Patrick, are you there?
I see him on there.
See him?
Oh, he's up. I wonder if he got moved out. Might come right back. Oh, there he is. I see him.
He's muted.
He's muted, but I, I don't see his face, so you can't, he can hear me, though, I'm assuming. Patrick, would you like to make a comment? Well, let's give him an option to come back, I guess, and I don't want to wait too long. Dave, do you have any comments?
Yes, Erin, thank you so much. I I've read this report three times already. Um, it's a, it's great work and and really it's a, it's an outline for a campaign. I mean, what I've learned is that the uh, you know, our messaging just needs to be stronger. We need to answer and the concerns and and the questions. And and I think that's uh, that that we can do that. I mean, um, we can answer questions about co- it was like the labor building. I remember, you know, people were stubborn right to the very end until, you know, we did some math and the labor building would have cost more than uh than Plan A. Um, you know, I I remember even going over to the building and then inspecting it and then talking to an architect and an engineer. So it's just a matter of getting that information out. Um, I think we have momentum and I think we really should stick with May um and really based on on your report and and some of the things that the the public has said. And I say that because when we look at the math of the vote, um, you know, we're held by a higher standard with the super majority. And, you know, we can't control that, but we did, you know, get, we we won the popular vote and won and and lost the Electoral College. So, you know, we all know how that works. So this time with the messaging, you know, I I think, you know, we'd be able to convince fence sitters and 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 I think we're we're going to still retain all the yes voters. Um, and I also think if, if we try to get this, you know, if we get distracted and, you know, we try to come up with other designs or other, you know, we're just going to blow the timeline. And and a year, two years down the road, you know, who knows? I mean, we've been talking about this for twenty years. And and a year, two years down the road, you know, who knows? I mean, we've been talking about this for 20 years now. So I think the time is now. I think it's just a matter of messaging. And if we use your report as a plan for a campaign, I think uh I think we'll have a new library and a new Park and Rec building.
Dawn, would you like to contribute? Do you have any comments, Dawn?
Well, she's muted right back.
No, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, I echo Dave's comment on messaging. Um, I wasn't here, so you know, I I I don't know what kind of um marketing and messaging was done. But um and thank you, Aaron, for your your report. I also gleaned a lot of information from that. Um, two or three of the things that uh struck out the most to me are, you know, when we when we do go back to voters, uh, we definitely need to explain very clearly the cost. That was something that was very obvious from your findings. Um, not only in terms of costs for each voter, but uh operational costs. And then another factor that might need to be taken into account is the life of the library and, you know, how long the timeline of this investment. Because right now we're working with a library that's 50 years old. And uh maybe people don't realize or need to be um reminded that this is really a long-term investment for the community. So I think that was my main point this time. I'm sorry, I'm not breathing, so running out of breath. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just wondering if Meg is there and she'd like to say something? I don't know if she's on.
Hi, Jackie, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, great.
Okay, so thank you so much um for asking, Jackie. I don't have anything to add right now because my call has been dropped a few times. And I've been following races and um so I don't have anything to add, but I'm gonna re-listen to the parts that I missed. Um, so I'm just gonna keep listening. If you have specific questions for me, I am here and I have heard at least 50% of what's gone on, but I just don't feel like I can add a comment right now. Sorry.
Sure, sure. That's okay. Thanks, Meg. Glad you're there.
Thank you.
Okay, so um I have a few comments. There, for me, there were three major takeaways, um but there and there were lots of things that I noticed. But I think for my brain right now, Aaron, um this is gonna be a great resource. We'll go ahead, whichever way we go ahead. And we're gonna be looking back at your your report for the next year. But I kind, I think we could focus today. So we have 45 minutes. Let's come to some conclusions. We can focus on thi- three things that really stood out to me and that we need to make decisions on today. A lot of your information will be invaluable when we start our campaign and our messaging. But what stood out to me today, to move forward today, is that how everybody in the community loves the library. They appreciate the library. They really want a new building. We got 64% of the vote, the vote. How do we move move forward? Also, cost. Cost was a biggie. Um 6.2 million for the bond just came up as a big number for most people. Covid, absolutely, maybe that affected the people's perception of the figure and the number, but we have to work with 6.2 and see what we can do. And the question of when the bond should be on the ballot, and this kind of segues into the next part of our our agenda here. Um, so some people thought that May was too soon, and I under can understand their arguments. But perhaps they can't see the whole picture that the board members can see and that the city council can see that, yes, we've been doing this for 20 years. And waiting until November does have some pitfalls for everybody, including increased construction costs and increased perhaps of bond rates and loss of some grant money. We don't know what's gonna happen to the grant money in a year. We know we're okay to May, but we don't know what's gonna happen for next November. People questioning their pledges. I personally have a friend who made a nice pledge. And when it didn't pass, it was, well, are we gonna get our money back? What is gonna happen to our money? So I can see that if we postpone another six months, that puts those things at jeopardy. Um, momentum, we have an incredible momentum now with the volunteers and committees and everybody's minds on the on the bond and the library. Are they gonna be as enthusiastic a year from now? So um, yeah, let's, I'd like to move on with the agenda. I don't want to hold the agenda up. Let's focus on what we've learned from Aaron's reports that we have to use or need to use for today's decisions. And then we'll look at the other pieces later on. So let's not get bogged down in all the information from Aaron. Thank you, Aaron, for your hard work.
But everyone from the board.
It is.
Patrick's still on?
Oh, we tried him.
Oh, I didn't know if you wanted to try me.
Oh, do you want to try try Patrick again? Patrick, would you like to make a comment?
Oh, you do there?
Yes.
All right, I don't really have anything to say. I have, Aaron's report was super awesome and me being a super noob and for this whole thing, uh really reading all that, all the documents and everything last night really opened my mind. I have a lot of questions and comments, I guess, for this later half, but Aaron's report really helped out. And a lot of the sentiment that was uh brought up in the focus groups are things that me personally, it's like the maybe lower to middle income uh income family would probably bring up as myself. So um, yeah, I don't really have anything. I'm just uh I have some ideas and questions for this later half, though.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Oh, now I see your face. Okay, Bob, we're good.
Thanks, Jackie. Thank you, Patrick. All right, this is Mayor Bob. We're on the second half of of the meeting, the creative part, I'll call it. I'm gonna run down real quickly what the agenda is in front of you. And then I am going to offer a, I think it's called like a straw dog maybe or? Anyway, I offer some suggestions of how we proceed in the next hour. But let's let's cover the decisions that we'd like to make, uh the items that we want to reach consensus on as a group. So consensus between the Board of Trustees and City Council. Item A, timing. So we're we're gonna be making a thoughtful recommendation decision, you might say, on whether to go with a May 2021 or November 2021. There'll be a lot of robust discussion on that. Next item is scope. Any design elements from the original project, should they be revised? We'll consider such things as the parking plaza, parks relocation. We've talked a lot about that. Um, the actual um building itself, energy efficiency upgrades and technology. And during that time period, I'm gonna ask Kurt to talk to us a little bit about costs that were included in the parks relocation to help clarify that part. Next item that we'll get into is the actual cost financing, how much of the bond uh should be, how how many dollars should be put into the bond request? And fundraising, what are our expectations for fundraising? And Amy Rush, if you are on this call, I'll be asking you to update us on fundraising status at that point. And then the last item, item D, under this next hour, communication, what are the expectations for coordination of public education efforts? And that, of course, involves discussions between city staff, the library foundation, the library board, city council, et cetera. From there, we will try to, and and in each of those items, we'll do lots of sweeps, as I call them, lots of input from Board of Trustees, um from council. And then I will try to summarize and uh take at least five minutes to see if we've reached consensus and provide that guidance verbally um to Annette, our city manager, to take that forward and flesh out the details. So here are my thoughts uh to get us started on all of these items. Uh, first, I think we all agree that we owe it to our citizens, whether they participated on a focus group or a survey or some informal discussions that you all have had on at the post office, for example. We owe them feedback. Important that our credibility, both the Board of Trustees and the council, uh that government's credibility is high moving forward. And the way we achieve that is to be able to tell a story of how we use their input thoughtfully and how we crafted changes that are appropriate and reflect their input, then be able to give them specifics. So here's some examples. These are not, these are just examples to get us thinking um that I would like each of you to take a a few quick notes, and I'll boil it down real simple. This is the kind of stuff that I would expect to see as a mayor that we reach consensus on. Again, the numbers and the examples are just something to get us thinking. So let's talk about bond amount. I think it's currently 6.2 that we went to the vote. I would recommend that we look at something around $4 million. And the way that we would reduce that bond, um there are two line items that I would have us consider. One is to reduce the cost of the building, have our local architect, Andy and Humphreys Polley, work on getting creative, not reducing the square footage, but seeing if there are something in the outside of the building or the inside of the building that they could reduce a half million dollars. Uh, to go from $6 million dollar bond to $4 million, we'd need to then um eliminate some other items that were in that bond to a tune of about a million and a half. Some of the items that I am open to discussion on would be the Parks and Rec move. If we if we know how much that costs and the city can work on other funding mechanisms to do that, that are outside the bond, I would like to hear about that. The plaza is not directly tied to the library, so that's on the table. How could we fund that? And the extra, I'll call it extra parking if it's beyond the minimal parking that we had. So those were my thoughts on that part, the kind of the real serious items that get to people's concerned about wanting seeing, wanting to see a lower bond, wanting to see a simple project that focuses on the library. Two other concepts I wanted to um to put out there before we get into our discussion is the technology hub concept. I think that's really important that we have an answer of how we will meet those needs, access to computers, tablets, internet. And then um the last item is extremely important, as Aaron stated and as all of us stated, is the concept of fundraising. Originally, we had a 50% goal. It's a rough figure that the council had asked. Uh, the fundraising not only includes donors, but grants and such things as local option tax, LOT, the city's CIP dollars, all of those types of funding outside of the um bond. That was our goal, is to try to reach at least 50%. So that's a figure of somewhere around $3 million. And I think we'll need to discuss that as a group today and reaffirm what our goal is there. So that's kind of my guidance um for what it's worth. But more important than that, we will have a robust robust discussion on all those things, because they do interact. When you start talking about timing, if you know where I'm thinking and find out where the council's thinking and where the board is, they may affect our timing. So from there, let's let's get started. Our first item is the timing of the bond election. Should we stay with a May 2021, or should we look at November 2021 or some other time after that? The considerations that I think we've already covered those, but let me let me just review. Um, pandemic uncertainty, time needed for public education effort, time needed for additional fundraising, status of our previous grants and donor commitments. And then if we choose to move with some big big-time moves like funding the Parks and Rec and move to another location outside the bond, does that, is that affected? Um, can we deliver on that if we have a May 2021 bond? So let's start with the Board of Trustees. What's their? I would like you to do a a poll of uh Board of Trustees, and then I will have council weigh in on timing.
Okay, this is your poll. Um, let's just keep our same order. Lola, would you like to comment on timing of the bond?
Uh, can everyone hear me on that?
Yes, Lola.
Okay, what I wanted to say was, at first, I I wanted to pay particular attention to the fact that some people think that we're just trying to turn it around because we didn't like what was offered first. They were given as an offer, and we're just turning it around. I want to make sure that we communicate, which we've all talked about, communicate that we're looking at their concerns. We're trying to remedy those concerns. We're not pushing it down their throat. But I think May is the best time. We're coming out of the snow. Whether we have Covid or not, I think we're coming through the winter. May is always an exciting time in McCall, I feel. We have a lot of energy. We're ready to move on. And I think that would be the same thing with this bond initiative, even though I think we have to have a lot of a communication between then and now saying we have things we are working on. We're not pushing the same thing down your throat.
Thank you, Lola.
Uh huh.
Patrick, would you like to weigh in on timing?
Yeah, yeah, I I agree. Yeah, May is probably a good time. However, I think the only way you could actually get it to go through would be to keep the name, the bond name the same. And you will have, we definitely have to cut the cost by like taking out the parks and the plaza. I mean, I know it's optimal to get all that stuff added on there, but when you make a bill more convoluted by tacking more and more things on there, people will find that suspicious and not really want to be on board with it. Um, but I, yeah, having it as soon as possible would be good. I think getting seven months to, you know, maybe make it more energy efficient, cutting the operational costs, getting uh tech, the technology piece out there, which could help minimize people's family costs with having tech, more tech and possible tutors at the library. Or, you know, just having that mention for future pandemics or, you know, this kind of stuff could help. So yeah, I think, yeah, May would be a good time.
Okay, thank you. Dave?
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, I agree. I think May is is uh is really the time to uh to go. I think we do have the momentum. I, you know, the vote was close. Um, life's uncertain, and there's nothing we can do about that. Um, I also am very confident we can knock and reduce the numbers uh to this project. I mean, I think uh, you know, Kurt and I have talked about some things and we've already crunched some numbers. And I've already reached out and and made some calls and um and and have some commitments that we will get some help on that from from different people. So um I think we can, we can certainly re- reduce the costs. You know, I'm not sure about 4 million. I think that may be unrealistic with the with the construction. Um, you know, I'm not sure about four million. I think that may be unrealistic with the, with the construction costs and the, and, and just construction costs in general in McCall and, and the way, uh, you know, we have to build here, but, um, and, and I also think it might just be a better way to message that, you know, this building probably will be for the next 50 years. So if we life cycle that cost out um, and explain that to the public, I think, uh, six point two million is probably, um, a great deal right now. I mean, two, three years down the road, um, you can just continue to add millions to that. Um, you know, just for instance, the garage bay for right now is about $25,000 and another few years it'll be double that. And that's just because of material and, and labor and, and the cost of overhead for construction.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's see. Um, Dawn, would you like to comment?
Uh, I don't have any comments.
Um, I think I'm gonna, can I, I guess I should ask Meg. Meg, do you want us to keep asking you or just? I don't think her.
Hi. Yeah, I'm, I'm here. I'm here. Um, so Jackie, I'm just, I'm just listening at this point, but I do appreciate you checking in and, um, I'm listening to and ready to hear direction from, uh, the rest of the board and council. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Meg.
Please with May.
Oh.
She didn't make it. No, I just.
Um, Dawn, are you on board with, with May or do you just want to abstain or? Are you on board with May?
Sorry. Um, yeah, um, I'm not saying anything because I, I'm afraid I will just muddy the waters, but I kind of feel like that we just, we should discuss timing after we look at the scope and financing. So I'm sorry. That's why I'm being silent.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I just, I feel really strongly about May being the best time. If we wait till November, we're going to have other elections in with the bond election. We're going to have city council races going on. Um, if we wait till November, we're going to have increased costs and everything's going to be postponed. Um, we don't know what's going to happen to our grants. We don't know what's going to happen and applying for grants further and further out makes it more difficult, I think, not easier. We're still looking at, if we pass the bond in May, we're still not looking for a new library to even start being built for a year later. So we're now looking at construction costs really for May of 2022. Um, so now we're putting that off for another six months. I think, I think we need to go forward. I think if we wait, we're going to lose things, not gain things. Um, we did have three million as the fundraising goal, but it was just a guess. It was Beth Markley who we hired who looked at what was happening in our community and she made a good guess. And we're doing the best we can. We can, we've, right now we're at two million. Um, which is a big part of the cost. We'd love to have three million and we're going to keep fundraising. I just, my gut feeling is a year from now is too far out.
All right. I took down some notes. Um, I think I captured the library board's sentiment on that and appreciate, you know, giving us reason why to not just date, but your logic and thank you. Thank you, Jackie. Thanks to the board. Like, uh, council, and then I wanted to respond to David's comment because I think there's a misunderstanding on one, one item. I'll come back to that after. Um, Mike, what's your, what's your thoughts about the timing of when we should hold a bond election?
Um, I'm on board with May.
May of, uh, 2021, right? Coming May?
Just coming, hey, May of 2021.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
That's what I'm hearing from all the parties. And so I support that.
Thank you, Mike. Um, Colby?
Yeah, um, I, I agree with May. Um, I think it would, we shouldn't possibly discuss May of 2022. As what, you know, what are the virtues of that? Um, you know, off the top of my head, I, when we look at, you know, the cost being a major factor in this, um, with, with the parks facility. You know, we're May of 2021, we're, we'll still be in our current year, fiscal year, uh, which we have kind of our CIP laid out and we'll be kind of beginning our budgeting for the, the following year, I guess. Um, but I, I think one of the virtues of, of waiting till May of 2022 would add some flexibility of potentially being able to figure out how to fund, um, that parks facility, um, as, you know, maybe more of a substantial opportunity to reduce the bond number um, for the library. Uh, you know, I think it provides a little more flexibility in that. Um, also just you know, where the world is currently, we, there's a lot of things happening right now. And I think that you know, I'm probably not alone and feeling fairly overwhelmed and, and, um, life in general right now. Um, we'll see how it goes after the next couple of weeks too. And the there, there's the amount of unknown factors is huge. And I think it is adding a lot of stress to, to people's lives. Um, and I, I do understand the comment of you know, turning, we're going to turn back around and just try to get this thing passed again right away. Uh, you know, one year isn't a lot of time for people to, to change their opinion on that. Um, I think if, if we have the patience and the ability for one more year to really focus on dialing the project, continuing to dial the project in all the numbers, um, financing, I, I think that you know, May of 2022, for me personally, just feels like it has a higher likelihood of success, but you know, that's open for discussion. And I wanted to put it out there since, you know, everyone agrees on May and I, I do too. I think that May is the appropriate time to get this on the ballot. Um, but I feel like 2021 might be a little too soon.
Thank you, Colby. All right, Jill, we're, we're still down to three council members at this point. Okay. So my, my thoughts would be, thanks for bringing that microphone over, Jackie.
This is Mayor Bob. My thoughts, um, I'm okay with May of 21 or 22. I think probably we'll, we will come back to item A once we've discussed the other items because they do interrelate. But I've captured what the sentiment is of the Board of Trustees and uh, different opinions from the council. Now, I wanted to go back to David, your point. Um, so when I made the statement and I'm, I'm sure there's other people in the that are listening that have the same question. When I made the statement of the bond amount of four million dollars, just for the sake of discussion, that doesn't mean that it's a four million dollar building. I, I'm assuming that we would still capture at least two million dollars from our CIP, LOT, the Laura Moore Cunningham Foundation Grant, et cetera, and all the private donations. That that would total up somewhere um, higher than two million dollars, perhaps as much as three million dollars. So that we would be able to build the building as envisioned. With the one caveat, I was going to ask, um, again, for the sake of discussion today with all parties, that maybe we set a goal of a half million dollar reduction in the cost of that building. And the, I believe it was last, the last estimate of the building itself, not the bond amount, but the building itself was somewhere around six point something. Yeah. So we would ask Humphreys Polley and our architect to work on such things as the exterior facade, the how many fireplaces we have, things like that, but not to change the square footage. So does that, does that help in terms, that, that was what I was thinking. And again, and again, just to get us thinking because then the other items like the plaza, the Parks and Rec move, the parking that's additional to the library. The city is going to have to work on that. And as Colby pointed out, that's a, that's not going to be easy for us as council and for that and staff to to solve, but we have given this a lot of thought and we're up to the challenge of trying to do staff work to see if it's possible. How would we do that? All right. So that's item A. We have three more. Let's move on to scope. The scope, um, section is, let me reread that again. Should any design elements from the original project be revised? And the considerations that we've written down are such things as the parking, the plaza, parks relocation, the citizens hall meeting space, energy efficiency upgrades, um, technology and anything else. So, um, in my notes, I, I want to make sure that, um, we do get a chance to hear from Kurt Wolf to explain about what costs were included in the parks relocation so that we understand that. Kurt, are you on, on the call with us this morning?
I am. Mayor Bob, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're coming through. Great. So if you could briefly update that and explain, there might be some questions on that.
Okay. Um, so I'll, I'll make it brief. Um, you know, I want to be clear that it's, you know, in the cost estimate, it says parks building and that, that, that number, you know, you know, and to, to bring it full circle to some comments, we've seen that it, it seems like a million dollars is a lot of money to put into a shop to put lawnmowers in. And it's, you know, it's, it's an entire relocation. It's a, it's a site that needs to be um, prepped for the laydown, not just the building. And, and on that note, the building package alone, the steel prefab building, it's a very simple, cost effective building. It's a very bare bone shop and office space for, for that entire operation. Um, the site prep alone was pretty close to equal to what that building package costs to purchase. You know, that does not include construction of it, but there's a lot of site prep on that site. So it's a one-time cost. It's an upfront cost and it's, it's pretty significant. We're working on ways to trim that down. But to do that, it takes time, you know, it's coordinating with other city projects, contractors to, um, to bring in suitable fill because that, that was a significant cost in there that we're, we're trying to find ways to, to reel that in. So it's, um, I just want to be clear that it's, it's the relocation of an entire operation that serves uh, a lot of, um, you know, provides a lot of services throughout the community that I, I think a lot of people aren't quite familiar with. It's not just parks and recreational programs. It's a lot of services that are behind the seeds, the noxious weed program, et cetera. So those are the true costs. Um, you know, they've been whittled down and whittled down and you know, I also want to make sure that people are aware that when we do that, those costs come back at a later time at a higher cost, such as trimming off two bays now at a, an estimated cost of $25,000 per bay is going to cost, you know, the community five to 10 years from now to accommodate future growth. Um, and for the most part, current needs, uh, a lot more than that, you know, double or triple that to, to add those bays on at a later date. So that's what we have to consider and be cautious of. And, uh, happy to answer any questions. Um, again, I, I, I'll reiterate Colby's concerns about May of this year. There's only a limited pool of money to fund this if it's not on the bond initiative. And one of, you know, our, our reasons for having it in this bond is to keep up with the library's schedule to get construction done. Um, we have been planning for this move. We have been, uh, in, we do have it in our CIP, but we also have a lot of other CIPs and existing facilities and infrastructure deferred maintenance projects that we can't ignore to shift those priorities in the CIP to relocate the shop. So that takes time, uh, to keep it on schedule with, with this project, which we're very much in favor of and being a part of. Um, we need to recognize that. That's, that's the value in having it in the bond. I don't feel strongly one way or the other, whether it should be there or not. But if it's not in the bond initiative, it's going to be a challenge to fund an operational relocation in the timeframe that we want to get this library project built.
Thank you, Kurt. And, um, I just want you to know, and I, I think Annette understands this, that we I, I believe everyone on the Board of Trustees and I certainly know everyone on the City Council wants you to be successful in that move. How we fund it, we're still wrestling with, but we want to make sure that it's a quality job that is done correctly, as you described it. And we are in support of that happening. We do, we do value very much all the, you know, all the work that your staff does and the equipment needs to be taken care of properly. And we, we don't want to shortchange you. So please keep that in mind.
Oh, absolutely. So and, and know we're, we're working hard. I've had great conversations with David, um, over the last few months and, um, local contractors to try and reel them in as, as a part of this and figuring out how we can make this happen. So.
All right. Well, thank you for that update. Kurt, a question? Yes, absolutely.
Hi Kurt, David. Um, you know, you guys do a great job and much needed. And, um, I would, uh, as a contractor, I'd hate to have my equipment in four or five different places all over the city. Um, there's kind of an inefficiency to that. And, and that also means there's a cost to that. So some of that could be messaged in the campaign to explain the why.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And in the, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee is, has been discussing how they could get more involved to, to make that campaign pitch and to tell that story. So I think, you know, yeah, there's a lot of work there. And if it's a sooner bond initiative, I think, um, we need to fast track that. But there, there's a lot of energy moving in the direction of, of support and helping tell that story and make this happen. So I think everybody should be aware of that as well. Yeah.
Thank you. One other question. Um, we, we don't often have this conversation, but you know, there's a blessing and a burden of tourism, you know? If we were just a community of 3,000 people, you know, you, your projects and the things you do would be scaled back probably significantly. But you know, the, the blessing for, for tourism is that, you know, for businesses and, and, and people that um, are part of the, the industry for that. The, the burden is that it can, tourism can have an impact quickly that um, is somewhat unpredictable for cities and budgets and the impact on infrastructure and services and, and, and really what we're talking about and why. Do, do you think if, if we could get this in the messaging to, to try to, um, you know, the, the, you know, why we need what we need now and for the future of the community um, as it relates to tourism, you, what do you think about that?
Oh, I, I think absolutely. Um, I think it's all part of it. The same could be said about just, you know, the other locations we've looked at and communicating that, the, the long, the, the upfront cost to this permanent move versus a long-term investment to a leased space or something. Those situations and, um, yeah, again, I agree. It's, it's all part of just telling the whole story and it's, it's a tricky one. We, we thought we were doing a pretty good job of that going in and some of the feedback we've got, uh, that might not have been the case, but we can build off of that.
Thank you.
Okay. So we've talked about parks and rec. Got some, I don't think we've reached consensus on that yet. We did get input from different people. Uh, also want to hear a thought on the plaza area. Should that be part of the bond? Now that's the area of the library.
Just comment, I think that that I think everybody involved in this project with all the work that we put in would love to see everything in one package and just pass it and we're done. But obviously we have to go back and, and make some changes. And I think that's a perfect place that we can look for other funding. I know people have brought up urban renewal because it's something they can do. We have a new urban renewal district and I think it's Michelle that can talk about that. But I think the plaza and the extra parking, we can find other ways to fund it. So it might be someplace without losing the integrity of that's, that new building to reduce the cost. Is Michelle a person who can, I don't know if she's on the call.
So.
She's there.
So rather than, um, get into the winds on that, what I, what I would suggest is we see if there's interest from other members on the call. So board members as well as city council. And if so, on those kind of topics, we would ask city staff to come back with, you know, some ideas of how, how to fund.
Do you want to just poll?
So let's, let's hear from, um, yes, let's hear from everyone from the board of trustees and then I'm going to pull this in council.
Okay. So I'm just going to do a roll call again and see if we have any comments about, can I lump plaza and parking together or would you rather?
All of those items under, um, that I mentioned. So the extra parking that.
Extra, right. Extra parking plaza.
Parks relocation.
The whole, that whole. Okay. So Lola, comments on changing the number of the bond by looking at parks and rec, looking at plaza and looking at extra parking?
Yes. Um, if Kurt is still on, I wanted to, um, tell Kurt, I, the things he did this summer were amazing. I have to applaud him for the work that Parks and Rec did. It was truly amazing to see how he accommodated all of our guests and visitors from out of town. So congratulations to the Parks and Rec department. I thought you guys worked so hard and it showed. I, I being, you know, an advocate for a new library, we have to cut back. And I would have to say I would eliminate the plaza and the parking. We're going to have to make it skinny because this won't pass or make it so absolutely transparent that everybody understands exactly the cost of what the building would be for Parks and Rec. There has to be a huge campaign for messaging and communicating that issue. But, um, I would agree with eliminating plaza and parking.
She needs extra parking.
Yes.
Thank you, Lola. Patrick, would you like to comment?
Yeah, uh, I'll have to leave here in a minute and get back to work, but uh, I think is a, yeah, having a plaza would be nice and everything, but that would probably have to be taken out for this to go. I think keeping the parking though would be a good way to pass since we lost so much parking downtown. And with the current library's parking, you can barely get there, like when there's not a pandemic, obviously. But when I was going there for, to take my test, I usually wasn't able, able to park at the library. I'd have to park or ride my, uh, park way away or ride my bike. And to keep it accessible for, you know, most people that even use the library, you need more parking. That's kind of where I stand on it. Um, yeah, I'll have to watch the rest of this. So I have to get back to work though.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. We'll know that you're not on anymore. Um, let me just clarify, Patrick, that, um, we're talking about extra parking and we have to have so many slots and we will have.
Yeah, I mean, I don't. Yeah.
We get, we get that. Get that. Hey, thank you for being on. Thank you for your time. Uh, Dawn, would you like to comment?
Yeah, thank you. I also support, um, looking at removing the plaza and the extra parking. The parks and rec part of it, I don't know all the issues involved, I have to say. So I'll abstain from commenting on that.
Okay. Thank you, Dawn. Dave, did you want to?
Sure. Um, I guess my thought is, and it really relates to construction sense, is that it, it would be prudent to, to try to do the largest part of this package that we could. I mean, the plaza is about $161,000. The parking is another $182,000. In the scheme of a, of a large project like this, you know, it will cost more to do it later. So I think the way to change the, the number of the bond is to, is with, you know, the bids from contractors, subcontractors and, and places where we need to secure the, the material for the buildings. So, and I, I'm really confident that those numbers can come down. And also we really, really need to think about the, this building's probably going to be for the next 50 years. So, you know, when, when we just divide that into the, into the bond, it's, uh, it's really, you know, a good number. We just need to explain it. You know, it's, you know, it's, it's really better to do it now. You know, the, the same, you know, penny wise, pound foolish. I mean, uh, there, there is some of that. If we, uh, if we try to, you know, cut too much, we're only going to have to revisit it later and it's going to cost more later. So I would say, um, we could work on reducing the bond by, um, you know, the, the bid process and, and reaching out to the contractors and the construction managers and the, and, and and the, and the companies that will be involved in the, uh, in the estimates.
I'm just wondering if you have, I hate to nail you down with numbers, but what you've been researching, do you have any idea what kind of impact it might make on? Cause we are looking, we're all looking at the number. We're looking at numbers and we're looking at costs now.
Well, well, some of the information I've received, you know, we can certainly knock it down by tens of thousands of dollars. So, you know, we're going to get more, you know, more construction, you know, for, you know, the, uh, you know, doing it now. I mean, it's just, you know, the more and more I talk to different contractors and subcontractors is the prices are only going to escalate and, and McCall is unique where, um, logistically it's tough. There's, uh, you know, housing issues for contractors that, that need to commute and come up here. So, um, if we revisit this or cut it too much, we're, we're only going to pay more for it later. And I think the public might come back, um, with some issues for that, you know, well, why didn't you do that then? It would, it would have been less money then. And, and as a contractor, I would say, yeah, I mean, you're going to, you could get more bang for your buck to do. You know, all the equipment's here, all the contractors are here, the, the site is, 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 is prepared. It's just, why build something and then rip the street up later? You know?
Um, so I kind of feel like maybe we could just stay where we are at the moment. I see what the clock is saying that's 11 o'clock and I don't know.
Well, we need to get on to, to more items in there.
Okay.
I'm going to keep you here until we.
Oh, okay. That's not my problem. I was just wondering if everyone else is gonna, we.
We will. We're committed to doing a good job.
Okay.
So, um, yeah.
I'm just thinking that these, um, there, it's interesting how all of these are, it's like a puzzle. And these all, all these pieces fit together in the whole picture and it's hard to pull out one piece because it affects everything, when it is, um, the costs, they're all tied together. So kind of talking about them singly kind of brings you back to the other question. That's just.
All right. So to be, um, uh, to be sensitive to your issue on that, we'll go on to the next one and we'll recycle back to council. Council's taking notes. Uh, the next item is, it's a pivotal question. What should the total bond amount request be of the taxpayers? And.
Mayor, it's Colby. Um, I, I'm currently in the middle of replacing a 50-year-old piece of infrastructure with something that will hopefully last another 50 years. And I've got an unintended degrading project happening right now that I am going to need to get to.
Okay.
I'm going to have to sign off, but I did want to provide some input before I did go.
Absolutely. You got the floor.
Yes.
And I'd like to hear your thoughts on, and I know you studied all the elements. So go ahead, Colby, before you head out.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for, uh, let me have a minute here, um, to kind of address the, the, the parking and the plaza thing. I feel like that's probably a nominal cost in the scope. Um, you know, it's, it's something that has to happen. When we build a new building, you're going to need the, the parking and the, the plaza area. I feel like there might be some cost savings potential, but I feel like it's going to be, you know, fairly small in the scope of the project. So I, I would say keep that stuff in there and, and figure out how you could maybe pare back on the cost. I think we're going to realize, uh, you know, more, a bigger impact on the, that number with addressing the, the parks relocation. You know, I've, I've, I feel like that there's, I share the similar sentiment as I do with the library, as I've had with the library in the past of, I support the, the concept. I don't necessarily support the location. But I'm not fighting that fight on the library anymore. But I think that there's, there's some potential in the, the parks facility in conjunction with a public works facility. I feel like we haven't fully discussed at the council level or it's, hasn't really been fully considered. And I think that that's the, the potential, but that's not part of this discussion. And so that's another reason why I think that if we have a little more time, uh, you know, May of 2022, I think that, you know, that might provide a little more time for the city to be a little more creative on, on how to fund, um, a bigger portion of that, that parks facility relocation. And then, yeah, I think with the, the library itself, I, you know, if, if we're able to, to make some, you know, modest changes that, you know, I, I guess consider what, what's the, the most value in, in any changes that you would make to the library, you know? It take into account what, you know, what the public perception value of those changes would be, what, you know, not necessarily just the dollar amount. Um, you know, I think you can, you can design some more efficiencies into stuff and, and figure out where, where we might actually be able to, cut some costs in, in areas that people may not see. But, you know, if you figure out what, what changes would, would change public perception on, on the, the cost of that, you know? I, I think those, those changes are worth taking into account. But overall, I, I think that the, the building, the current plan look great. Um, it looks like a, a really great facility. But bottom line, I, I, I feel like the May of 2021 is, is really pushing it to try to get it on the ballot and have, you know, make meaningful changes to the concept and in the city having the capability to, 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 um, fund some of the different things such as the, the park facility. So those, that's, I guess, ultimately the input that I would have and would like for you guys to consider. So again, thank you all for your hard work and dedication project over the years. I think it's super valuable. Um, and I definitely support a new library. And I'd like to figure out how we can get it done where the community is, uh, really excited and proud of, of what we've done. So thank you all.
Hey, Colby, before you leave, got one more question. I definitely want your input on.
Okay.
I think I, I think I know the communications, your, your philosophy on that. So I'm going to skip that one because you've been really helpful and supportive of that, having good communication. But item C is, uh, it, it's kind of a pivotal question, the total amount of the bond. What do you think that should be? I'd like your input and why. The, the rest of the group is going to have to wrestle with that. So give it your best shot.
Yeah, that's, that's the X million dollar question, right? You know, I, I, I think it comes down to the parks facility is going to be the, the pivotal part in coming up with what that number is. I don't see, you know, shaving a million dollars off of the, the building without a, you know, major overhaul. Um, I mean, I, I still, you know, I don't, I don't feel like the, the bond that was presented this year was out of the question. I, I, I think it had more to do with, um, you know, people's perception of, of the library. But obviously less money is better. So if we could do a $4 million bond, that would, you know, would probably be better, but I don't know what the realities of that would be. You know, and it, it would definitely require more fundraising, um, et cetera. But, you know, if, if we do have a little more time to work on it, I feel like maybe those fundraising goals could be met too. So, yeah, that's, I don't have a, a hard number that I would say we should try to stick to. I think that, you know, everyone knows generally what it's going to take and try to figure out the number that, you know, we feel like the, the community can accept. So somewhere in that four to six range, you know?
No, that's really helpful, Colby. And so, and, and I, just to follow up, because I know you got to get out that project. But, um, so for example, if, if we reached agreement, uh, the two, the, the board of trustees and the council on exploring parks and rec, let's say that's a million dollar project, getting that done properly over at the SIPA site, the historic site. If we explored that, doing that with, uh, other funding outside the bond, we're committed to doing that on the proper timeline. And the bond could be reduced a million dollars from, I guess it was 6.2 last time. So it could be reduced to 5.2 supportive of exploring that, you know, before we have to make the decision for the bond.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I, I, I think that the, the parks facility is where we're going to gain the most traction, in my opinion, on that. Other, I don't, I still don't agree with the proposed site for, for that facility. Because, you know, the discussion of the long-term stuff where it did cost more to add things and yada, yada, it's a, I, I think that's a whole other discussion for sure. But in general, yes, I would agree that, that, you know, we should try to figure out how to, how to do that.
Okay. Well, um, get outside, be safe. You got some great press coverage in the Star News about the project. And I have personally talked to some of your. about the project, and I have personally talked to some of your contractors from Utah, and they seem like great people, that company that's doing the work on the T-bar. So good luck with that.
Hey, thanks. Yeah, I appreciate it. And, uh, thank you guys all again for your time, um, and efforts on this. Yes, have a good one.
Thanks, Colby. So Mike, uh, since we, we got one person's opinion and, uh, from council, Mike Machesik, what's your thoughts on uh, the bond amount?
Um, so yeah, so covering the, well, let's just say we're covering these couple items. Also wanted to say I appreciated David's comments. Um, thought those were some good ones. Um, you know, I, I'm gonna repeat the same thing that I've pretty much said all along since last year on this subject. And that is, I believe in the people that are, um, behind this, the kind of, let's just say the experts in this, the people that have been working behind it and where they're coming from. And I think that our community, short of twenty-nine votes, were, are completely in support. Or not completely, but are significantly in support of, of what we've been working on. So as it relates to the first question of the parking lot plaza trying to de- decrease costs, I think that ties in with the question of what kind of numbers we're talking about. I don't think I'm in a position to say that, well, let's just target this number. I think it's a function of we were very close to passing this. And I think that we've listened and we've done research, and I think we are, um, being proactive and trying to do our best to, um, address the concerns of, um, people within our community. And if we can cut some items and decrease the number that we're looking for and show that we have very much taken it to heart, that people's concerns, um, and we move forward. Um, I mean, what I'm hearing from the library board and, and, um, is that they'd like to move forward with this, and I'm in support of that. And I think that we need to cut the cost as best we can and shave some of the unnecessary items out of there if possible. If that means that we have to push out, for instance, the fully developed plaza and, and extra parking, is that significant? I, I just don't think that for for me as a city councilperson, I, I don't really wanna get into the minutia, minutia hundred thousand dollars here or there relative to what we need, which is about six million dollars. Um, I think that needs to come from the people that are behind the project. So, um, does that make sense, Bob, or to the other folks here, kind of where I'm coming from on this? I just think that we've got a good group of people here. We've done a lot of work on it. We were twenty-nine votes shy. We're listening to the concerns. We need to come in with a new proposal that, um, addresses those concerns as best we can and follow what are the groups behind us wanna do. That's, that's where I'm coming from on it.
Thank you. Appreciate you being succinct on that. So let's go to this topic. Um, I wanna hear from Board of Trustees, if you could help me, if you would poll them. So we're on, um, what should the total, here are the questions that we need to try to reach consensus. What's the total bond amount request be? For the nearest million dollars. What should the fundraising goal be? Um, I mentioned fifty percent, somewhere around three million dollars, but we need input on that. And then, um, the considerations that we've been talking about are public feedback. We heard quite a bit about the tax burden. Uh, more fundraising creates more community support. And I was gonna ask Amy Rush, your opinion on, uh, fundraising and how we're headed and if you've been listening to the discussion so far, do you have any wisdom you'd like to pass on before we do a final sweep of, uh, the library board of trustees?
Yes, sure. Can, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everybody. Good morning. It's been a wonderful discussion this morning, and thanks for everybody's thoughts. Well, just to, so we're, we're in somewhat of a trickier position than we were even a year ago with the, with fundraising. Um, so I think I wanna, I'd like to, I think, break it up into two separate pieces, maybe would be most helpful, and I'll, I'll try to keep it brief, because the board has heard this, but, um, so from a, a grant writing perspective, and then also from, from my main focus, which is the, the major gift fundraising. So we really, we can go back to donors that we, um, that maybe, there were several donors that made like, um, uh, smaller gifts than they, than their capacity or their interest. Um, and are willing to talk to us again. Um, but with, with those, what we have to be able to go back to them with is a, not necessarily a bond amount, but all the details of what, you know, this is the, the full project budget and what, and then we're, we can try to work against it to send the, set the bond amount, if that makes any sense, if given enough time. Um, now, most of those donors, my guess is there, those, those gifts would be totally on contingency. Um, we're somewhat beyond the point of people, um, major um, putting forward gifts that are not contingent on the bond, because we understand now that we're, that there's going to have to be a tax burden attached to the project. So donors don't like to give their money if they don't know exactly where it's gonna go and when it's gonna be spent. So the, um, they don't actually wanna write the check until they know we have a green light. So there's that to consider. Um, all of the contingency pledges, I shouldn't, we shouldn't say all, a vast majority. There's a couple that are, that are in question. Um, but the vast majority are still in place. And the ambassadors are, uh, sort of lukewarm or split on whether or not they're willing to go back out to their peers, uh, right now. There, the, the general idea is maybe if it's somebody I haven't approached yet, but no, if it's somebody we're going back to, um, without the information, um, from the process that we're going through today. So I think there's potential for, for, for more fun, you know, more fundraising, certainly. It's very, you know, it's a very tough lane to crystal ball. Oh, hello?
Who just joined us? This is, uh, Mayor Bob.
Hi, Mayor Bob. It's Melanie. I'm so sorry. I messed up my schedule this morning.
Thank you for joining us. We now have a quorum again. I was just about to adjourn the meeting because we did not have
I'm so sorry. I set up a client meeting and totally
We now have three city council people present. Is that correct, Mrs. Joe? Okay, so if you could mute and just listen in, um, but thank you for joining us. Appreciate it.
You bet.
All right, continue on.
Okay. Like, where was I? Um, the, um, the, the other thing to just to just, and I really understand the, um, the, the sort of, some of the feedback that we heard from the public, and it's very, um, it's, I, it's probably what I would have said had I not been through the process of fundraising and learned what I've learned, is that this idea that the fundraising should come first, that the fundraising is, should be the, you know, the, the, the leading the charge. And it just doesn't work that way when you're looking at a combined public-private project. Um, the fundraising comes after. So, um, or at least with, um, a, a, a lot of the information and details about the project and exactly what it's gonna look like and what it's gonna cost and all of that sort of stuff. So while we can certainly, um, we're certainly, we're meeting, uh, bi-monthly, so we're meeting and we're talking about, um, I think a lot of the ambassadors are, um, listening in today, um, so that we can all keep abreast of the city council's process. Um, I wouldn't really feel comfortable setting a goal today and saying, I think we can raise X amount. Um, I, I don't think I have, that would feel like a total guess, um, at this point, and not, not a really, like, an educated guess. Um, and the other thing, just, just really quickly to say about the grant process, is most of the grants that we could apply for are going to be, we're, we're in a much better position to apply for them post-bond. Um, and post, um, so that, like, for, for addition, like, we could, we could do grant writing for the plaza. We could do grant writing for, um, a cool, you know, in the children, the children's discovery garden. We could do grant writing for those sorts of things, but most granting agencies, um, are not willing to fund something that isn't completely, um, where there's such a small portion of a question of whether it will get funded. The funds need to be spent within a year. Um, and they, many of them don't, for, for a lot of those reasons, don't contribute to capital projects, general contributions to capital projects, it's just not part of their funding for the vast majority of, of grants. So although there are some, I will currently looking at, there's about, if, if we've got every single one of them, it'd be forty-five thousand dollars of grants that we're applying for this fall, um, but it's not a huge chunk of money. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or I hope that's helpful.
Thank you, Amy. All right, we're approaching eleven thirty. The meeting was scheduled to run till eleven. Um, we have, um, we, we lost one city council member who had appointments. And you heard from Colby his opinions on things. Uh, Melanie has just joined us. And I am still on the line. And Mike Machesik is still on the line, so we have three city council members present. I think we have not lost any board of trustees. Everyone, Patrick had to go, go to, um, yeah. So I would suggest we try to wind this down. Um, would it be helpful to do one more sweep of members of the board of trustees, or do you want me to try to summarize? We certainly have not reached consensus on any topic today. But, but I will try to summarize where I think we're headed. Or would you like to do a sweep of the board of trustees?
Let's just kinda see if we can summarize where we are before, and then let, then do a sweep. That be okay?
Sure, sure. I will do my best, and you can help me, Jackie. All right, so we were attempting to reach consensus, or could we live with it, you might say, you know, that type of consensus for timing, scope, the amount of the bond, fundraising goal, um, that's item C, and then communications, what are the expectations for coordination of public education efforts? We did not reach agreement on timing. There were a number of people that feel that, um, well, I, I should say, I think we narrowed it down to the month of May is a better month to do a bond election than November. I think we reached agreement on that. But there's still, uh, there is not consensus between the board and the city council on whether that should be May of twenty twenty-one or May of twenty twenty-two. Um, so consensus would be everyone. That would include Colby Nielsen, and you heard him talk about that.
He was kinda wobbly on there. He didn't really do sort of, like, neutral, really. So he gave reasons for for, um, May of twenty twenty-one, but he didn't commit, and he certainly didn't commit to May of, uh, I mean, May of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I, so I meet with him every month, and that would be a wrong to say that we reached consensus. That would not be accurate. But we're, but we're gaining traction on that. Uh, my advice would be to council and to the city and to the board of trustees would be if we are going to go with the May of twenty twenty-one, it needs to be simple. Things need to be easy to explain, not convoluted, complex, not a lot of, a lot of excess detail. That's gonna be our challenge. Okay, the next thing, um, was scope. What I got from the discussion, listening, was people aren't interested in the small things like deleting the parking pla- uh, parking or the plaza. There wasn't, there wasn't, um, total agreement on that. There was an interest, I think, and I don't think that we have consensus, but there was a lot of interest between the board of trustees and the council in exploring um, how to, and I'll, and I'll use the million dollar figure, just because it's a round figure, how to move Parks and Rec responsibly to the location over at the historic site. Do it correctly, the way Kurt has outlined. Do it timely. It's roughly a million dollars, but not have that included in the bond amount. There was some interest in exploring, how would we do that? How would the city do that? And I don't think we had consensus, but there's an interest in that, and I was gonna ask in the final sweep if people could live with that, if I asked Annette to explore that. Like CIP dollars, LOT dollars. How would we fund that? When would that occur if we had a May twenty twenty-one bond election? Okay, the next item, um, total bond amount. I put out a, a number just to get people thinking of four million. And, uh, what I heard back was there might, a lot of people think six million's the right number, exactly what we had before. I would caution us, that's not what our focus groups told us. And it's not easy for me to go back to them or for you to say, we listened to you. It's the same bond amount. And by the way, we're doing it in May twenty twenty-one. I don't think that's very wise. Um, there is some risk involved. If we were to lower it, say, a million dollars to five, um, we'd have to figure out how to take care of Parks and Rec. Um, Amy has cautioned us a little bit about fundraising, but um, let's face it, there's risk on any, any number we put out. So we need to do a final sweep on that. I, I'm not happy with going out with this as a member of council and as your mayor. I don't think that's responsible with the law, with the same bond amount next to me. Um, and I think we should keep the press on, pressure on, all of us, helping Amy with the fundraising. I don't think, I think communication, we're all on the same page on that, so I'm not gonna, I really do feel that we're, we're listening to Erin, we're following her lead, we trust her. So I think if we keep our message simple and we have two or three changes that respond to the focus groups, our survey, and what we've heard from other people, informal surveys, then perhaps we have a good story to tell. So that's kind of what I got out of today's meeting, but I'd like to hear your, as chairman, what you heard.
So I just have a procedural question. Are we not making decisions today? I know it's a work session, but does that mean there's no decisions? So what can we do?
So because Melanie just joined us, we now have a quorum, and we can provide specific guidance. For example, we could, on item A, timing, we could say, here's our guidance, for, for better or worse, we agree we're gonna, we're gonna shoot for a May twenty-one, twenty twenty-one bond election. We can make that so-called decisions. So it's the council's decision, but we would do that based on if we had, you know, if we had, um, a consensus of on the board of trustees, which I think we do, from your board. So that's an example. On each of the items A through D, we can make decisions like that. Um, because it was put on the agenda as an action item. Is that correct, Mrs. Joe?
Yes.
And we now have a quorum back in session.
Yeah.
Just one, one quick question. Um, how long, I guess, my concern is about the timeline, and the more we, we try to tweak the plan, um, that would add a lot of confusion to the, to the campaign. It, you know, for May of twenty twenty-one, but how long would it take the city to figure out? If they could fund the Parks and Rec? So we could separate that for the bond, if, if that was the way the city wanted to go.
Annette, have you, have you given that some thought? Did you hear David's question?
Uh, yes, Mary, did. Um, well, as has already been mentioned, our budget's already set for the year. We know what our resources are that are available to programmed. Um, we would We would have to go back and, um. I'm not sure. We would have to internally develop a list of very difficult choices to bring to the council about what you want to cut. And shift to that project. So we would need to do some work that could occur in like December, January. Because of, you know, the timing, the lead time to internally do all that work and then bring it forward in a council packet. The other issue is just the timing of how our funding comes in and gets allocated. So for example, every year we have a process for how local option tax funds, the tourism, local option tax. Is allocated to the next year's project. So LOT has already been awarded, the contracts have been signed for the amounts that are going out. Between now and the end of next September. So if we want to pursue that as a resource, which is eligible, parks. Facility is an eligible expense under that ordinance. The timing would be, we start that process in April each year. To make the recommendations through the Lot Commission of what, how the next year's funding is going to be allocated and in what priorities. So the earliest we could. Have those funds available towards the parks project, we could have the council make the commitment if they were interested. In funding all or part of that move through that resource. We would know that roughly around, you know, you could do it anywhere between April to June. And then, but the timing of when that money becomes available to spend is really in October. So some of our financing options, because we don't just have the money sitting around and we have to rely on, you know. Other tax receipts and things coming in. That's part of why trying to, um. You would probably be able to make a commitment and indicate that you would fund it. Um, a certain way before May, but to actually make the official decision, include it in the budget and have the money there to spend. Might be after May, depending on which source it is. I hope I'm not making that too confusing, but it's the timing of how the revenue sources flow into our budget and. How it gets appropriated. So we, you know, the most drastic thing would be to go back and completely amend our budget and change what we've already allocated to other programs. Would be the most drastic thing that if the direction was you need to have this commitment of money, up to a million dollars. Re-budgeted away from other departments and programs before, say, February or something. I mean, obviously, we can physically make that happen, it'll be challenging. Or if we're looking at new revenues that are flowing into the city that haven't been committed yet. That typically happens in the spring.
So using that example, that, that's really helpful and makes, makes sense, we're tracking what you said, and it, using that example of LOT, if that was a. A tool that the council decided to use. It, it would not be available until, um, the earliest would be October, November of twenty twenty one. So if that's a strategy that we decided to use as a city and the council approved that. Then we would need to understand that we couldn't tear down the annex during the summer of twenty twenty one, even if the bond passed. Because there would be no home for Parks and Rec. Is that kind of how that would work, or?
Well, I, I think, and I don't know if Linda's on the line, but I think. If we knew that there was that commitment towards utilizing those resources, we might be able to do some kind of short-term borrowing or something. If we knew that we had to relocate parks in the summer of twenty twenty one and then repay that through. You know, in the new budget year, once we have those additional resources, I mean, we might be able to do something like that. But again, if I hear from the group today that we definitely want parks moved in the summer of twenty twenty one, go back and figure it out, then I can bring back that plan. After I've had time to meet with Linda and everybody and really figure that piece out. And then, um. So I think for me, the main thing is to know if the consensus is take parks relocation out of the bond project. That's enough for me to go back and, and get a game plan together. It's hard for me to commit in the meeting right now what that game plan's going to be, but if we know that's the direction, take it out. Because we think that will help the library project succeed, then we can get going on that.
Thank you, Annette, before we go to the next item, Erin, I, are you still on the line with us? Erin Greaves?
I am, Mayor, yes, sir.
Okay, I have a very pointed question for you, and I, I will admit, I'm a little frustrated right now, not with you. I'm just a little frustrated though at, at what I'm hearing from. Many members on this call. The reason I'm frustrated is I think if we go out with a bond of six point two million, exactly what we did before. And then we do it in May of twenty twenty one, we didn't really listen to our constituents. We didn't listen to the focus groups. I don't think we have a very good story to tell, that's why I'm pushing so hard on the things that I'm saying, but what do you think? As the person that conducted those focus groups?
Well, Mayor, let me start by saying I really like my job. I, I agree with what you said, I mean, I, I made a, I made a point to tell everyone who participated in the focus groups. That I was going to bring back what they said to their city council and that they would be heard. And I do think that the consensus in those meetings was pretty clear that the timing. Isn't right, and that's not going to make me popular. But the reality is that I think we're still in the midst of a pandemic that we're hearing every day could get worse. Whether you believe in that or not, there's people that are financially strapped, the economy's in a rough place. And that's the feedback that I heard. I heard that we have a lot of rebuilding of trust to do because there were some transparency issues with the communications, which is in that report. Some, some people that were directly involved in the project, some, some people who were just voting, who are very, who were very. Confused about what was included, so I think we have a lot of work to do. I think we have a lot of communication work to do. And I actually just pulled out, you know, my handy dandy list from the last election. Saying that, you know, in December and January, in the last election goal, I was identifying FAQs and. Fixed timelines for deliverables and identifying demographic public sets. And one of the most important things I think that needs to be added to that is if you review your original survey, combined with your focus groups. There were a total of, uh, I'm not good at math, ask Linda. Fifty people who said they were there somewhat likely, not so likely, or not likely at all to vote yes in the election if it was brought back. So I know that you were twenty nine insured, and that's the number that you're sticking with. But what I'm hearing from the focus groups is that I have some people who are not so sure they would vote for it right now in this time. And I've got some people on your original survey. That are saying that they are not so sure they would vote for it, so we have a lot of work to do, is what I'm trying to say. I'm not trying to poo poo anybody's ideas, I'm just saying you have a lot of work to do, we all do, we have to get together, we have to become more cohesive. We have to make sure all of the hands, all the fingers on the hand from the Friends of the Library, the Foundation, the City of McCall. You know, the, the, the Board of Trustees, the city council, that all of us are using a unified, completely transparent. Accurate message to all media outlets in all mediums that we use to spread the word. So I'm a little nervous, but I hear you.
Let me politely interrupt you there, and thank you. That, so we talked a lot about timing, but let's suppose. In our wisdom, if we decide we're going to go for it, May of twenty one. Twenty twenty one. I want you to comment on what you think will happen if we, in terms of our feed, you know. How are we showing respect to the people, we ask their opinions, if we go out with a six point two million dollar bond? Or should it be less?
I think that that's the decision of the city council, sir, they're your constituents and your voters. I, I'm, I'm not trying to pass the buck, I promise, but I think that the report itself was fairly clear. I mean, they said they want less, they want less than six point two million dollars. I mean, that was the consensus, so, I mean, I can only tell you what I heard. Does that answer your question?
Hang, hang on just a minute, no, that answers my question. Thank you. All right, Jackie, you and I gotta wind this down.
Okay.
I, I just want to know the sample size.
Twenty nine.
Twenty nine people?
Of this, of her, of her, twenty nine people.
Those are small samples.
That, well, let me actually, if I may, interject, we are also talking about a, a survey of eight hundred and forty four people. That was originally done online previous to the focus groups. So the focus groups was not necessarily the consensus of your entire voter group. But it was a small handful in order to highlight small particular areas. And keeping in mind that in the city of McCall, our average online surveys are somewhere around two hundred and fifty. Eight hundred and forty four respondents to an online survey, it's pretty fantastic in my experience. And although it's only been five years that I've been here with the city, I've only had two surveys that have responded this highly. One of them was the Fourth of July, and this being the second. So I do want to say that although it's a small sample size, and I encourage you to go out and, and walk the streets and talk to people outside your own. Circle that are really involved in, in the project, I think that's who we're hearing from here. But again, it, it's not my call, I can only tell you that I'm willing to do the work, whatever you all decide. I'm willing to help you and guide the best I can to help reach as many people as possible. I just want to be clear that you have, you know, more than fifty people that are saying they're not so sure they'd vote yes again. So that means we have work to do, and, you know, I, I follow your lead, you, you're in charge, all of you.
I just want to point out though, that Bill Thomas and I, we, we crunched some numbers and there was about a hundred and forty yes votes that never made it to the ballot box.
All right, so Jackie, I think you and I need to take control of this meeting.
I agree.
Let's see if we can wind it up.
I, I think everybody agrees that the bond that we bring back cannot be the same bond. We don't agree on how to reduce it yet, or how much to reduce it. But I think we can move forward looking for those ways to reduce it. That's why we're, we were talking about the plaza and the parking. Putting small pieces together might. By net a number that's enough to make a difference. Putting the pieces together to find that million, if we could reduce it by a million, might be. Perhaps shaving a little bit off the library building, no plaza, no park, no extra parking. Reducing the cost of the parks building, moving it, but reducing the cost, and maybe even filling in some of that with. A loan from lot, from the, from the year. I think we can put together those pieces, not right now, not today. But in my mind, we can't do any of that if we don't agree on the timing. If we could leave this meeting in the next ten minutes and agree on May of twenty one or not. We can, then we can move forward on all these other things. If not, it's, oh, it's going to be a year from now, everything will be different. Can't start planning, can't do communications plan, we can't look at numbers of costs. For a year from now, we don't know where it will be in a year, we know, we can, we're guessing where we'll be in May. So we need to make a decision on the timing to move forward on everything else.
Okay, um, here's.
What do you think?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have consensus between the two boards. However, I think we're getting, we're getting closer, and I really like Annette's idea. I, my, my gut tells me that if we go out six point two million dollar bonds, same as before, it will fail in May. I don't want to do that, I don't want to have two failures. I think we need to carve out a big, a big item, and I think we need, so that all of us, including Erin, can communicate things carefully. If we go with a May twenty twenty one, it's got to be very simple. I don't think we can complicate things with a, a lot of little trivial things. I think we should go for one big item, that's the Parks and Rec building. I think we should explore items like LOT, future LOT. Which will not be popular, but it may be what city council wants to do, and we should ask Annette to help us. Explore how to fund that so that that relocation can be done correctly.
I think that would make the library board very happy.
I think that would reduce the bond approximately one million dollars, I think. It's not going to be easy, it's going to be very painful, but I think the city is willing to explore that. There's other things that need to be woven in that we would need Erin's help, that may not cost anything, but we need. To have a better story than status quo. Just, we're going to put it out again and trust that you'll vote right.
No, we don't want to do that.
That's not, I'm, I'm not in favor of that.
The library board is not either.
Okay, so, um, we did not reach consensus, we reached some loose agreements, did that help at all, Annette, give you some direction?
Hi, sorry, I unmute myself. So I think what I heard was. Figure out what it would take to do the parks relocation without bond funds. And work with Erin on what our messaging would be for May twenty twenty one. Those are kind of the only two things I really heard there at the end and the.
Right, and, yeah, and I, you know, we're, we're just running out of time and. I, that's, that's really about all we captured today, it was, it was a really good meeting, really thought provoking.
Oh, yeah, we, I had, I took a lot of notes, I thought everyone had really good comments and contributions, and. It is a really big ask to get a large number of people on the same page in two hours or less, so I appreciate everybody's effort. And so what we'll do is take this feedback and we'll shape some options for you to bring back to the council. As soon as we can.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, Jackie, you good with that?
Yeah, can we have, maybe think about a date just for libraries planning? Like, we have a date when we might come, go to council with something?
Did you hear that question?
Yes, I did, um, well, the earliest would be November nineteenth, I think that's the date. Um, we've already done the packet for November fifth next week, so there's not enough time to do anything for next week. But, um, we could try to put something together with concepts for the nineteenth, which means that. Uh, all of that staff work will have to be done next week. But after that, if we can't hit that goal, it would be, um. December third, is that right, Bessie Jo, the first meeting in December is the third?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we have Thanksgiving and, and originally our timeframe was if we get some kind of guidance today, we would go back in the month of November and work with. Staff and Humphries Polley, depending on that direction that we got, um, to come back with something in the beginning of December. So we're still on the same timeframe that we had talked about before. Um, and given schedules and holidays in November, it probably is more realistic to think that we'd be back to the beginning of December like we originally talked about. And I thought I saw Meg's hand up on the virtual screen, so I don't know if there was something she was trying to weigh in on here at the end. And I thought I saw Meg's hand up on the virtual screen, so I don't know if there was something she was trying to weigh in on here at the end.
Hi, thanks, Annette. Actually, Jackie asked the same question I was thinking of, so thank you.
Okay, well, originally we had talked about trying to be back to council at the beginning of December, depending on the feedback we got today, so.
I think we've thrown you a pretty big curve ball and it deserves good staff work. So I, I don't want, I don't like to rush things where we don't have good staff work. I would like to give you enough time. It truly is a big ask, what we're asking you, so would you? Jackie's fine with December 3rd, right?
Sure. I just wanted to know when.
And I'm fine with that. Does that work better?
Sure.
Do that.
Okay.
All right.
I'm hungry. I have lunch.
I think we're, we are adjourned.
Yes, and the library board's.
Hey, Bob.
Everybody?
Thanks, you guys.
Yes, Melanie, I'm listening.
I have, I just have one, one question that I want to clarify. We haven't really decided on the date that the bond is going out, have we?
No.
That's.
Okay, that's, that's just a clarification I needed. Thank you.
Yep, you're right. Thank you. All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're working towards May 21. Okay. That's what I thought.
I have asked the staff for it.
Okay, then we can come up with a different number.
Yeah.
That's a lot of work, Bob.
It always is. It's, it's no, this is no more work than a normal.